We're going to go ahead and kick it off. We'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim to thank you, too, which is to say our implications.
Yes, I will. Will everybody please sign ahead? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of our blessings. We thank you for the freedom to be able to meet tonight to discuss and govern ourselves. We do ask that as we continue this meeting, that you give us open minds, patience, and the will to do the best for this town. Lord, every person cares and wants the best for Summerfield. Help us to be united. Help us to lay down fear of the unknown and to trust one another. As Hebrews 10:24 says, "And let us consider how to stir up one another to love and goodwill." Help us to make it a habit to encourage one another. With your guidance, we can do all things. In your name we pray. Amen.
Yeah. Councilperson Robinson, if you'd like to listen to the play, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three, our introductory draft, do you mind beginning our introduction?
Sure. Jeff Bacon, acting county council.
Janelle Robinson.
Jonathan Henry.
Tim Sessom.
Lynn Morgan Skavany.
Heath Clay.
John Dollett.
Daniel Luther, interim town manager and finance officer.
Jim Hoffman, town attorney.
Matt Dollett, interim planning director.
Welcome, Matt. Now, Jeff, I think you meant county clerk.
What's that? Oh, did I say?
You said county, you said county council.
Okay.
That's why I paused when I went. I was trying to get it corrected.
What did I deserve?
You deserve your word.
I have to agree with all the time you put in.
Yeah, exactly. Item number four, consent agenda. We can handle this with one vote. So is there discussion on the consent agenda or someone might make a motion?
I do have some discussion. On the minutes on page four dash six, or sorry, I was at the bottom, at the top, page seven of ninety, and if you go down to E, the history committee, that's pretty close, but not exactly what was said, and I will be reconfirming what I said tonight when it comes up. It's page seven of ninety, and it's at the bottom under E and history committee. I just wanted to make an amendment, but I didn't write it out. Can we?
There's page numbers up here.
All right, we're about four, six. One, two.
Well, you know what? We got a new packet because there were updates, so it may not match yours.
Something that's just plus one.
When was the new packet released?
I think it's last time. It's under open minutes, page four, six, open minutes.
This is close to seven.
At the bottom.
Under E?
Open minutes of eight thirteen, page four, six at the bottom.
That's everybody who was supposed to have what they have.
Seven of ninety at the top.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to amend it?
I don't have my. Do you have? Can I, can we amend it later? Do you want to do it right now? Give me?
If you can approve it, though.
Then I can just wait and approve. Can we wait and approve these next time? Then I'll let our.
We need a motion, end it.
Okay.
To not approve the.
So everything else, okay, I'll make.
We still approve item A and permit B and approve item C and do item B next time if you want to do that.
Is everybody okay on closed session minutes or do I want to wait on this as well? You're fine with that? Okay, so can we approve A, approve B, closed session, omit open session, and approve C? Approve A, B, and C?
Okay, we have a motion. We have second.
Second.
Have a motion and second for the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. So that was the approval of the consent agenda minus B, open session. All right. Item five, announcements.
I have a few announcements for us. This coming Saturday is our summer cycle where we do the recycling at Loughlin. I said elementary, I think it's a professional development school down Summerfield Road. And also on September twenty-seventh, I believe that's a Saturday, it's Movies in the Park, and it's going to be at the amphitheater this time. And also, I wanted to say thanks to the staff for setting up for Music in the Park. I did attend, and there were several hundred people there, and it was a great event. It was Eric and the Chill Tunes, and everybody really likes them. Thanks to. And one other thing, just to let you guys know, that I went to Oak Ridge Town Council meeting, and I also went to the Weddington Town Council meeting just to thank them for the resolution and support that they gave Summerfield during the annexation issue time period years. So that's all I have.
Any further announcements? Item number six, emergency services report, Summerfield Fire District. Okay, Gilford County Sheriff's Department.
I got it. Summerfield Fire District reported the following for August twenty twenty-four. Fire-related calls twenty-three, EMS-related calls sixty-nine, other calls fifty-nine, total calls one hundred and fifty-one. Also installed six child safety seats. The Gilford County Sheriff's Department reported the following for August of twenty twenty-four, two hundred and forty-two calls and nineteen case reports.
Thank you. Item number seven, attachment for council's information. Everyone has that information. Are there any questions or is any committee chairperson here that would like to make a report?
Um, manager, may I ask you one question? So just to confirm, where do we stand with budgets and that type of thing? Because we have to have certain dates and that. Approved and.
As we discussed, unfortunately, prior staff had not advertised the budget public hearing. As a result, we will have to have a new public hearing and a new approval of the budget. In effect, your approval of the budget was an interim budget, and it's a temporary approval until such time as the new budget hearing and the new approval of the budget. So you will pretty much be ratifying your approval unless at that time you want to make any changes. But we are operating under an interim budget until such time as we advertise, or advertise with person, a public hearing for the budget.
Okay. And is there, just for my confirmation and maybe other people that's there, a deadline for that?
No. We, we will be advertising soon, and we'll be having that approval soon, but we, right now, there's no deadline.
Okay.
Do you mind if I ask what work you did to make sure that had not been advertised?
We had, we looked through the emails, we called the news and record, we looked on the server through all the documents, we did not see any record of a budget public hearing being advertised.
Well, thank you for catching that and working to make this right.
And we'll just leave that as a special call meeting.
Yes, either that or we'll do it at the next meeting. We can do it in October if we would like to do that, but we can do a special call if we decide to do.
Should we decide tonight that we all want to agree in October, and then that way there's time for planning, advertising, et cetera? Do it? Everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on item seven? I'd like to make public comments. We have a list here of folks that have already signed up. If you're here, I'd like to make public comments. You can say anything up to three minutes. We ask that you do begin with your name and your address, and then your time will start. So if you'd like to fill one out, it's not too late. Please take opportunity and just pass it around. We'll be happy to hear from you. First person is Gail Dunham.
Gail Dunham, five eight zero five, downtown drive. I noticed on the website, page four, Vandera, and the Vandera project has had four years, and the town has received tremendous help with grants from many organizations, and the town signed contracts that this is what the town was willing to do. And now, for the last three years, you know, they're saying, oh, we don't have enough money for Vandera, and we're looking at projects instead of a regular washroom facility, we don't have enough money for it, blah, blah, blah. And it seems that the focus has been to put the money into the water tower and the water, which is not going to keep our well safe. And I think there's an issue there, because Lynn Devaney owns quite a bit of property in Summerfield Road that will benefit, and I think that's a conflict of interest, two one sixty D, one oh nine, conflict of interest, because the outcome of the water project would have a direct substantial, could have a financial, certainly a financial impact on the person who owns property in that area. I think that that should be considered. In the meantime, I think you should go back to what was decided a long time ago. Priority should be in Vandera. There's a lot going on. No one was at the county meeting. I was there, I thought it was very interesting, but there's a lot going on trying to have neighbors with developers' property. Incidentally, I thought the county was terrific. Their level of professionalism for their board, their staff was excellent. I do want to thank, let me do the names here. Special thank you to Dana Luther, our finance officer and town manager. I can't tell you how much we appreciate all that you have done for the town as long as we've been here, here basing. And for Bridge Laban, and who is really another wonderful person doing the work, Jim Hoffman. I'm really thankful that you were able to come in. I know you're working hard. And Jeff Bacon, welcome. And I think there's another person who was a part-time hire, and I think, I really think you're doing a fabulous job of what you have to work with. In the beginning, my suggestion was that those three commercial, the three capital projects should be made table for six months so that the, so that the staff could focus on the town, finding documents, even how much money we can spend there. I mean, this is a terrific job, but unfortunately, you have fast track on all these capital projects, and you haven't told the town what you're doing, we don't know what it costs, and unfortunately, you're very nil in telling us the impact on our property. Thanks to Dana for the terrific financial report. And I was reading through it, I have lots of, I have lots of questions, good questions. I mean, if the report is such that you could.
Okay, Miss Dunham, your time is up.
I know. There's never time. I get one, I get three minutes for the rest, a month of the next city for the rest of the year to talk to the wall.
Teresa Perryman.
Who said that?
I did.
That was a smartass thing to say.
Well, absolutely, you made it was no less.
Yes, it was. But that's, you shouldn't insult any town, any citizen.
Your time is up, Miss Dunham.
Wow, this is very, zero four zero one, great long drive, but I kind of feel like the same way, Tim. I get up here every month and say stuff, and I just feel like I'm talking to the wall. It's about water and the trails. Nobody along Summerfield Road wants this. Take that money and put it into Vandera. It's a wonderful park, could be a wonderful park. If you're worried about paper towns, you're worried about money, put it in the park. Make Summerfield on the map. We don't have to go around sitting there and putting, just making anybody upset down Summerfield Road. My family's been here since eighteen hundreds, trust me. They're turning over the graves. This is not what they envisioned. They envisioned the water that we have. It's a great supply of water here. It's a great tasting water here, and we have several parks, little mini parks that people can walk. I've seen it too much. I mean, and to sit there and there's getting so much traffic on these streets that actually having a sidewalk down Summerfield Road is dangerous, and you're taking people's land. And I'm not sure where this extra easement came from. I still haven't got that question answered yet, but I know, again, I cannot stress, don't be doing this for personal gain. Think of it as the town, and put that money into Vandera. Thank you.
Tim, I'm not very good at this. I think maybe we should go back to your phone.
Okay. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Get Don to know Don standing there.
Hi, I'm Marjorie Dunham, a proud resident of Summerfield, North Carolina, and my address is one two zero one Scalesville Road. A lifelong North Carolinian, a farmer, an attorney, a former teacher, a military widow, and a community volunteer. This year, I am also a nominee for North Carolina House District Sixty-two, and I wanted to thank the town of Summerfield Council for the work that I have in our town. I know it's been just a little bit difficult, just a little bit difficult. Anyway, I was married to a U.S. Army Colonel, and after five deployments, combat deployments, and other things, stateside, I left Concord, my marital home, came here to the farm where I live, and I've actually loved being here in Summerfield. The Bimbo family tradition is one of service, and that's exactly why I'm running for office. I'm not a career politician. But just to let you know a little bit about me, I started volunteering when I was ten years old, and I haven't stopped since. My most recent activities, I'm being on the board of North Carolina Zoo, the North Carolina School for Science and Math, and the Fund North Carolina Motorsports Association. As a matter of fact, the North Carolina Supreme Court just gave me another award for my volunteer activity. I'm running to listen and to serve you. I've already canvassed over two thousand doors up here in Northwest Gilbert County, and it's not about party politics for me. You're looking at a very unusual candidate because I have been endorsed on the, so I was kind of honored by this, by Republican Governor Martin, John Martin, for my work in education. He was like, I'm the best, he said, kind of embarrassing, as well as Governor Louie Cooper. I promise not to take party politics to the House, but to listen to every single one of our constituents and to be, in essence, party blind, because it's time to not let something like the annexation happen again to Summerfield where the voices of the constituents were erased. I promise if I get up there, I'm going to give some common sense to the decisions that are made. I do understand that North Carolina is a charter state, but there's times when enough needs to be enough, and we say, who voted us in? Who hired us in? What is it that they want? And so that's Marjorie Dunham in a quick nutshell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and it's good to see you, Janelle, because we were both at the Gilford family. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Molly Byrd. My address is eighty-three hundred Wright's Farm Lane, Summerfield. I am actually a member of a nonprofit organization, five oh one three organization in Stoudsdale, called Friends of Stoudsdale, and I thought that I would take the opportunity to come over here and show you all our flyers that we're putting up around town up in Stoudsdale in various locations, I've gone around town. It's also on our Facebook page, but I also wanted to invite the town of Summerfield to participate. It is a event, it's a free community event. We have gates and so forth for the children and adults, and we serve a hot dog lunch for five dollar donations, which I've been told is delicious. We are having old farm machinery, new farm machinery, antique cars for years of holder, and then a silent auction, and it is on October the fifth, twenty twenty-five, at the Stoudsdale United Church in downtown Stouds. I hope you all will come. Check us out on our Facebook page, and we'll see you there.
Molly, you have, yeah, you have two minutes left. Can you give us those dates and times one more time?
Yes, it's October the fifth, from ten to four. If you want to bring any machinery or ride early, we're also, we also, already have twenty-plus vendors.
Is that right down, right downtown?
Downtown, right across from the bus stop.
Oh, you said that, Stoudsdale.
Stoudsdale United Church, yes. I have a flyer, I think I have to leave with you all if you like.
That'd be great. We love that.
Thank you so much for your answer.
Council manager and/or attorney response to comments. Any responses?
I just, a couple things. One, I wanted to address Ms. Dunham's comment about money going from Vandera to water. We have not ever talked about any money from Vandera going to water. It's not something we're doing or are considered doing. And county meeting, no one was there. I was there, we spoke at the meeting, and Ms. Bimbo was there as well, so we were represented. There was, the personal gain, Ms. Perryman talking about the A and Y, I'm the one that lives closest to it, that would probably, well, John runs too. Other people would walk on it, but I'm the one that lives closest to it that runs up Summerfield Road several times a week anyway, and I voted against it. So I don't feel like there's any personal gain, you or not, issues. That was not you.
I appreciate your support.
Any other comments?
All the ones that you have, did you not?
Then I will make a comment. To be clear, while council member, Mayor Pro Tim Devaney and I don't always agree, I will say that there is no personal gain in a water line being put in for fire protection, improving or increasing the value, and to try to say that in public is not a good thing. It's simply not the case, and no one should hear that or believe that. Any other comments to, public comments?
I'll say a few. Ms. Dunham, I agree with you that the staff is great. We're very glad and very blessed to have them. And I'm not sure for how much longer, but again, thank you, stick around as long as you can, in some way, this is everybody here. And I actually agree with Mayor Sessom as far as, I'm unsure of what sort of issue Ms. Devaney would have, and I'm sure if there's anything she would disclose that to the mayor, not to the mayor, to the town attorney.
I can tell y'all right now. I own one half of three acres with my ex-husband.
Yeah, and I highly doubt that would be any sort of, I mean, everybody would stand to benefit or lose in the same way that she would, I believe. Ms. Perryman, I understand that you, you know, just like Ms. Dunham, you feel like you're talking to the wall sometimes. Just because everybody doesn't respond to you doesn't mean that it doesn't weigh on the people that are up here, and I'm sure that you know that too, because you've been up here as well. And so sometimes when there are back and forths like happened earlier, you have to remember too that we are just people, and everybody is not perfect, and we all accidentally do things from time to time. So, you know, I apologize for anything, the back and forth that happened earlier, but at the same time, we are just people. Ms. Bimbo, it's great to see people coming out here, folks who have not been involved in politics before, getting involved in politics, and as you can see, politics is sometimes heated. Most of the time it's heated, right?
I have a couple more t-shirts.
Yeah, I'm on the t-shirt. And Molly, that Farmer's Day shirt does sound fun, we'll be sure to spread that around. So thank you, Molly.
Item number ten.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
It's not necessarily in response to comments, but it's in response to other comments that are being made in the public. One of the items on the agenda last council meeting was regarding public records. We've had numerous inquiries about public records. We've had requests. We've had inquiries why the requests weren't being filled. Because of the numerous requests, I placed the item on the agenda to fill everybody in on the situation. The agenda item was in no way an attack on prior staff. It was an informational piece to provide counsel and update on where things stood. As you well know, the town clerk is responsible for maintaining the records. The town clerk had a spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet said open public records request. I presented that information from the town clerk's spreadsheet after Mr. Bacon researched with the requesters, many of the requesters, whether those public records were still open. We then found out whether they were considered still open or not. I presented that information to council. Unfortunately, and the policy does state that the clerk must be provided with a copy for record keeping, so the clerk should have had an up-to-date list of those public records that were outstanding. It was stated that the former finance officer handed me a folder with her outstanding public records request. In no way was I to understand that that was all the open public records requests for the town. So in suggesting that I was trying to say something against the prior staff, I was trying to inform the council with the facts regarding the numbers of public records requests. That was simply it. There was nothing else that should be read into that, and.
And Ms. Luther.
Go ahead. And there were, I'm being told that there were public records that were already filled that were on that list. Well, if the town clerk listed it as open and we did not have any records in the, we found a cardboard box under a Cordenza that had public records that had been filled, they were not filed, they were in a box, and we just happened to look in the box to see that they were filled, public records requests, and in those requests were no copies of these records being filled. So for us to know otherwise, we were presented with an insurmountable task when we started, considering there was no staff, and we're doing the best we can. We're not going to say we're perfect. There are going to be issues, and we appreciate that everybody's patience as we work through these issues. We're going to make mistakes. Everybody makes mistakes, but this was just an informational piece, and it was not an attack on anybody. And like I said, the clerk is responsible for those records, so somebody telling me that the finance officer is giving information really does not mean anything to me, considering the clerk is responsible for those records and not the finance officer.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Luther.
If I could say one thing.
This is not really. This is, this is, I provided her time to do that. This is particularly.
We're going to have a full discussion.
Yeah, under other business, it's totally appropriate. I didn't want to interrupt her, so I'll let her finish, but this isn't really where we should be discussing this.
We'll get it.
Item number ten, we'll move into a time of public hearing. Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate your information very much. Public hearing is action on reference RZ dash oh six, request to change one parcel resigning from agricultural district AG to conditional zoning rural residential district CZ dash RR, location sixty-four eighteen Lake Brent Drive, Summerfield, North Carolina, having a parcel number one three six four nine eight. Just for a purpose, a point of clarity, this did not appear on our original agenda, but it has been noticed, it has been, noticed and put out to the public, the appropriate people have been reached out to, to the adjoining properties are planning. Our planning board has met on this, and we're also, we're always glad to see Mr. Fuller here, who's chairman of the planning board. And so that's why it did not appear on the original agenda. So we apologize for that, but we did post a corrected one, and we're certainly good to go forward with this hearing and resulting consideration. So that being said, how would you all like to proceed? Typically, what we do in this scenario matters. We have the applicant present, we have the town present, and then we have public hearing time. We hear from the public on the matter, then we close the hearing, and the council discusses it. So is that good with you?
It's good with me.
Okay.
He goes first.
Okay, okay. So you want to go ahead?
Well, I want, I might have to give you a quick review.
That's what we normally get, just an overview, talk through the documents briefly.
So like you already stated, it is a reselling case. It's roughly 24 acres. We've got an applicant here, Mr. Bill Greca, case number RZ-0624, residing from AG, agricultural to conditional rural residential district CZRR. And I'll read a quick synopsis. I don't know if it's got the... This is only different as far as the land use, as far as the surrounding land uses go. To the north is incorporated to the county, single-family residences. To the south is RS, single-family, it's all single-family residents. And all that. I will say this real quick, because I don't want, I know our time is limited, but I'll give the planning department recommendation.
Could you speak a little louder?
You can speak louder.
Yes, please.
Yes, of course. Given the limited, this is a planning department recommendation. Given the limited scope of potential commercial uses, the planning department recommends that the board approve this reselling request. The planning department finds that the application is in congruence with the comprehensive plan given. It's appropriate housing and residential development. But I'll also read, when they came to the planning board last week, the sketch plan was nine lots. Planning board, and you have that letter in front of you. One of the conditions was a limit to eight. And that's something that the applicant agreed to, and planning board agreed to. So I will read, I will read the planning board's letter of recommendation to you. So everyone can hear if he does, if everyone would like that.
That's fine, okay.
The Summerfield planning board heard the reselling case RZ-0624, consisting of one parcel, 6418 Lake Brandt Road, having a parcel number 136498, September 5th, 2024. The applicant will have to resell the 24.56 acres from agricultural to CZ, conditional zoning, rural. The planning board discussed the case, and applicant was requesting up to nine lots. And basically, the planning board and the applicant agreed to max it at eight lots. The applicant is here tonight, and we've got the signed letter to you guys. Good questions for me?
No, if we do, we have our opportunity to ask.
Not a problem.
All right, thank you. Mr. Greca?
If we could just clarify.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Lake Brandt, yeah, Lake Brandt. I said Lake Brian, and I'm off.
Thank you. I read that.
I think we're all looking on our phones for Lake Brian.
Wait, turn.
Bill Greco, Lance Lucio, field box 347 in Oak Ridge. Thanks to the council for having me here tonight. We'd like to thank staff for their assistance in putting this application together. We did have a snafu on the planning board meeting scheduled, so we had to reschedule. We thank the planning board for accommodating that and holding a special meeting. We did have an open house on this, well attended, good questions all around. We thank those members who participated there and offered some input and shared some of their concerns. At the end of the day, I'm going to go quick, you guys seem like you've got a lot to talk about tonight. 24 acres, there's nothing remarkable about this tract in terms of historical value. It's essentially an open field, it's got a manufactured home on it. There is an extreme on the eastern boundary of the property that will be appropriately buffered. From a design standpoint, it's pretty much a blank canvas for us. We could easily accommodate 24 lots here. What we're seeing in the community is a demand for some larger acre tracts, where some folks can spread out a little bit, whether that's for toys, pools, outdoor living spaces, or whether that's simply for larger homes to accommodate young adults who are sitting around a little longer these days, or for some of the older folks who might want to age in place in some of it. With all that said, we have conditioned it to a maximum number of lots. I got a valuable bad lesson at the planning board in terms of multiplication and division, which was pretty unusual for somebody to get me on that, but they feel great job. You guys have a great planning board here. So we do have a maximum number of lots. We've limited our uses to the single-family residential structures and customary accessory structures with that. Can't say a whole lot more about this when it is in harmony with our DDO, our land use plan. The staff has recommended approval. The planning board has recommended approval, and we certainly hope you folks will approve that tonight. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. So now we'll go to a time of a public hearing. If you have something you'd like to share over there, you can take, introduce yourself, give us your address. Take up three minutes to discuss it. I currently have none. Is there anyone who would like to take opportunity to speak to this? Hearing done, I'll then close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for questions, discussions, or a motion. And as they are thinking on that, Mr. Greca, do you need that light? Because you're videoing, or your flashlight is almost really bright.
I'm afraid I'm going to have a seizure sitting up here, because I'm like barreling down. I think you're going to ask me where I was on August 28th.
I was prepared to interrogate you.
Thank you very much.
Just testing out my skills. I'll be happy to talk. So sorry, excuse me.
Okay, open to discussion amongst the council.
If I could make a motion, would that be a hearable and discuss?
You always make a motion and then, but there's another opportunity for discussion, so they can still discuss if they like.
I move that we approve RZ-06 for the reasons set forth by the planning board, which include that it is consistent with the town's adopted comprehensive plan, due to its maintaining rural character, will not adversely impact the value of neighboring properties, and is therefore in public interest and is in harmony with the surrounding community.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second. Sorry, I wasn't listening closely, but you included two of those things. You did those options for approval. Did you hear that, Matt?
Yeah.
You good with that?
Let's make sure that we include those. Do y'all agree with those conditions?
I have two of these things. Yes.
He said rural, he said maintain open spaces and rural atmosphere, rural character preservation.
Okay, very good.
But the good is, there were two conditions, yeah.
That has eight lots and...
Limited, so limited to single-family homes and accessory.
It was presented that way, so you don't have to add that.
Yeah.
We're good.
Okay, approved with the amendments and limitations recommended by the planning board.
That's correct. So we have a good motion and a good second. Any further discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed. Thank you, Ms. Greca.
Thank you.
Good to see you, sir.
Might have been our justice reviewing after.
Yeah, I think we should always have a debate on the second Tuesday of the month. Moving now on to item number 11, business from the mayor and council, water project update. Who put that on the agenda?
Okay, that was, last month I said that the engineers were going to present this month, and I was off on mine. They're going to have their 75% design case ready by the end of September, so we'll be able to discuss it at the October meeting.
Okay.
That's what they put on the agenda, because I had said that last time, but I had my date wrong.
Okay. All right, then.
Can I give a small, I will give a small update on it.
Well, that's, what's it?
Okay, so I think there was some question about the water line, the water lines for fire protection. And so I brought a map just to show you guys, if we can get this projector on. We practiced, and it was working before the meeting. I think this made up, this map...
It needs time to warm up.
It needs time to warm up. I thought...
You can sit in the night and then come back while you're warming up?
Sure.
Okay, so temporarily table that for a warm-up and...
Oh, here we are.
When that's warmed up.
Can we use the lights? Oh, there. Okay, so I'll just show you, when we started this project, we have 6.6 million to spend. So here's where the water tower is going to be, and this is, we had enough money to do phase one and two. So it's going to go, the water, this is water for fire protection. The lines are going to go down 150, and we're going to get, we're going to wait towards 73. And then it's going to start this way down Summerfield Road. And so that was phase one and two. As we get more money, we will continue with future phases. So we're going to get Station 9 right here, then we're going to come out 150 to Station 39, Lake Brandt to Station 29, and then back down Skalesville Road. So right now hydrants will be, this is what we have money for. And as we get more funding for water for fire protection, we will add future lines. So as you see, this is a nice circle in the middle of Summerfield where we will have hydrants, and it will hit the three fire stations. It's expensive, big costs are going to be to go under 73 and across 220. So we got as close to both of those things as we could with this first 6.6 million. And I think that's it. I just wanted everyone to be clear that this is our future plan, this is the big plan, and this is what we're starting with right here.
What is that yellow line, Dan? Is that the Summerfield Farm District?
Oh, my computer, sorry. I'm not sure, but that's not the Summerfield Town Line, so that might be the Summerfield Fire District. Okay. So that's our plan. It's nicely centered in the middle of Summerfield and hitting all the stations. Does council have any questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Item B, A and Y Greenway update. I'm going to ask, if folks ask these things to be added to the agenda, if we put their name beside it? I have no way of knowing who's put that on the agenda.
Did you have anything?
I'm sorry, what's the topic now? No, I think it was just a general update for the public that was put on there by staff, and things are moving forward. A letter went out to the residents that live there, letting them know that there will be some work done in the area as they are doing survey. And so the citizens that live along there have been, have received letters to let them know. And that's the only update there is?
Yes.
Item 11C, committee appointments or reappointments.
Hey, that's myself and John. Before we go forward, because there's been lots of confusion on what the term ordinance is for committees, I was going to ask Dana if she could, in very black and white terms, explain the positions, the tenure of the positions, and when it rolls into a single year.
And also, no pressure to actually, if you don't know it, to come up with it right now. Have you had a time to actually understand it?
Yes.
And you've got a copy of it tonight?
I've provided everybody with a copy tonight of the committee ordinance. There, there's been a lot of confusion, in pretty terms, and... We discussed the terms at the last council meeting, but we will reiterate again. So according to the town ordinance, appointments and reappointments to all committees shall be made on the basis of the fiscal year. So at the start of each fiscal year, like I said, appointments, reappointments. So we did not have a July meeting. That was decided when the calendar was adopted. That was not decided by us later in the year. That was when the calendar was adopted. So since the August meeting would have been the first one of the fiscal year, we looked to see if these appointments and reappointments had happened in June or prior, and they had not. They were not on the agenda for then. So what we did was we brought them to the August meeting. And the way it works is if no citizen has been approved by council to fill an available seat, an existing member may continue to serve until the next fiscal year. If no new applicant is approved for that upcoming July 1 opening, then that existing committee member, regardless of the term limit status, may continue to serve until the next fiscal year, which would be the following July 1. And in terms of the terms, and that can all be found on page two, item 1 and 6. So in terms of the terms on the committees, you have a two-year term, and you can have three terms. And then after that, it goes based on what I just read, that you will then be approved annually if there are no applicants pending. What council had decided this past year, for August, was that they wanted to look at any applicants, since there was the transition and we were going through the documents, any applicants that had applied, and not look at just the May 15 deadline, which is when normally it would be done. But it wasn't done in May or June. So that's why we brought it to council in August, and those are the stipulations.
Thank you, Dana.
And we can amend that or modify it, right? If we decide to, we can change the May 15 date to another date if we want to anyway, right?
Yes.
Change.
Which has a potential policy change if you decide that if somebody comes forward and wants to apply for a committee, and you do have somebody serving an extra term, that could be a change that you make if you decide to make it, or you could just let them serve an extra year and hold those applications. It's whatever council would decide. You have the choice to amend this policy at any time.
Order.
All right, sorry, ordinance.
Okay, so with that said, John and I both agree that this is the first time that we've actually, with our tenure on council, followed this where we came back in August instead of July and went through each committee to see where those changes would be and who would be an additional leader or not, based on additional applications and alternates. So with that said, I also want to clarify a few statements that are rolling around in the community that are not the case. I stated last time that, that Mr. Peterson stated that he and Mr. Mark Brown would like to stay on the history committee. Peterson would be chair, and Mark Brown would be co-chair. I stated that I had not talked to Mr. Gary Brown to see if he would like to continue another year term, and that I would do that. I did that after the last... I did that after the last meeting. So therefore, based on, let's see, now I'm going to say this, based on communication from staff, and my going through the folder of random applications that was left from prior staff, I needed to confirm a number, how many seats were available on the history committee, because I was under the assumption there might be two applications, I knew definitely of one, staff knew definitely of one, I wasn't sure, and I had not talked to Gary, and Mr. Doggett, you hadn't talked to Gary either. So we felt, or I felt that the duty was to wait, table everything, so at that time, we voted as a council to put Mr. Peterson and Mr. Brown on, Mr. Brown's term was not up, and Mr. Peterson would do the one year. So today I am confirming that I did make calls, and I checked on resumes, on resumes. Mr. Doggett and I held an interview this past Friday with Mr. Nicolati, and that's where we stand today. We have Jim Button now did resign because of work changes, and so that gives us two open slots with that. And so tonight, I would like, with John's agreement, to make a motion that we elect or appoint Nicolati to the history committee.
A second.
Yes.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I will make one other comment in the discussion, and that's only because his name was on the agenda. Mr. Gary Brown just wanted his name removed for this town meeting, and he would be, he said it's fine to discuss him at the next town meeting.
And Bruce Peterson resigned.
And Bruce Peterson did resign.
Further discussion?
But I have to say that Mr. Peterson resigned with, based on what was written, not understanding or given, I don't know how, who, when, or why, incomplete, non-accurate information based off of this.
Who's the new chair?
I'm sorry?
Who's the new chair? Mark Brown?
Mark, it's not understanding Mark Brown, I do not know, I have not asked, Mark and I played during tags, I think about six times this past week.
It's in the post.
It's in that letter, but I haven't verbally talked to him, I've talked.
Wouldn't it help if the chairs of committees asked the people that are up for reelection if they want to run again before we have to vote on it?
John and I had, and John, please tell him, we had a little mini discussion, and I like the idea that you come, we follow the ordinance every year, but I think that based on my personal schedule, we start in May, and we ask chairs to start asking committee members, so they can see what's happening, that gives us time until July, we don't have the meeting members, handle it in August, but be proactive going forward and not reactive, and not have this mess of where people aren't understanding ordinances, and so that's why I would still like, and I still will call Mr. Peterson again, now that everybody's on the same playing field. Do you agree, Mr. Doggett?
Town man is very responsible for that.
Well.
And let me clarify that the policy does say that they're supposed to contact us if they do not want to continue, but I think Councilwoman Devaney was, she was calling the individuals to confirm, but the policy says that they would contact us, but that wasn't the case unfortunately. We were finding out third party, that people had resigned, or they had not been updated on the rosters that they had resigned, and we were unaware that they had resigned, because the roster still had them on there, and that was part of the confusion, and that's why she was calling.
I would recommend not putting any of this on the agenda until whoever has talked to everybody, and everybody knows the status, because of the way this was handled, we've lost three really good, really active history committee members.
I'd like to respond to that, and that, that would be a lot of work to call all those individuals, and we went according to policy, and I don't know why there was confusion about a policy that had been placed, in place since 2015 and revised in '22, I don't know why suddenly there was a lot of confusion, but what I'm hearing was that the annual reappointments weren't done, and we were not aware of that, we were strictly going by policy and what policy said. So in terms of, I liked the idea of having the chairs communicate with the committee members, and then the committee members notifying the town whether the individuals would like to continue or would not like to continue.
Certainly would be helpful, but I do think we should vote on, still continue to vote, Mr. Teague.
Yes.
I really mean, I just can, we'll take it upon ourselves, check the chair, just to make sure the chair.
I think, I think checking with the chair, yeah, that would be a quicker option, but.
Right.
I appreciate Councilwoman Doggett and Councilwoman Devaney for trying to follow town's policy on these committees. Thank you.
One last comment, everything was set the last I had talked about with Mr. Brown, with Mr. Gary Brown, sorry, I have to, because there's two Browns, with Mr. Gary Brown and Mr. Teague, and that's why both names were on the agenda for this evening, so that was placed, that was followed policy, we were clear until today. So going forward, I would like to take care of my motion, our motion, Mr. Doggett, that we move forward to appoint Mr. Nicolati to the history committee.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Someone like to make a motion, move to closed session?
I made a motion that we go into closed session to consult with the, an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided under NCGS 143-318.11A3, to address the amount of compensation and other material terms of an employment contract, and to instruct staff or negotiating agents concerning the price and other material terms concerning real property as provided under NCGS 143-318.11A5, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by, by or against an individual public officer or employee under NCGS 143-318.11A6.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you all for being here, for those who will leave now, we'll be back soon.